Call the meeting to order at six thirty two. Pledge allegiance. Roll call, please.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 Presence. All the trustees are present. Mayoral report, just a couple of items that I'd like to mention that are coming up between now and our next meeting. Obviously, Friday is Veterans Day, and we want to acknowledge Veterans Day, all the veterans that have served. There are two events that I know of that are taking place at least. One is at eight thirty at the high school on Friday morning, and then the Antioch, VFW has their ceremony at eleven AM. So, and the Village Hall will be closed on Friday for people's knowledge. Secondly, is Library and Information Services Month. We want to acknowledge Native American Heritage Month, and by the time we meet again, it'll be Thanksgiving. So, wishing everybody an early and happy Thanksgiving. Next item is citizens wishing to address the board. Is there anyone signed up?
No one signed up.
Holy smokes. Okay. Next is consent agenda. So I have a motion in a second. Motion trustee Luther.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson. Any discussion? Not roll call, please.
Here's.
Aye.
Mason.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval authorizing the village administrator to execute an agreement with Williams Architects for Architectural Services.
Council.
Okay, thank you. Number two, consideration and approval of payment of accounts payable as prepared by staff, the amount of eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and ninety-three cents. Do I have a motion in a second?
Second.
All right. Mary.
Doesn't matter.
Motion by Mary is second by Mary. All right. Any discussion on this side?
Can we just have an explanation of why it's like three times more than what it normally is?
Yeah, I saw those on the over the ten thousand page. Do you want to explain those relates to pay me, I believe?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the payment on the first, first and second payment to the contractor on this accounts payable. That number is five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars of this total.
And that's for the road?
It's for the, yeah, road resurfacing programs.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Here's.
Aye.
Mason.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
In here.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. All right, now, number three, consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the village administrator to execute an agreement with Williams Architects for Architectural Services for Village Hall and Public Works Facility. Resolution number twenty-two dash one. Motion in second, please.
Second.
Motion trustee Domeniac.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson. Administrator kind.
Thank you, your honor. So the process that we met through is called the quality-based election process. So we issued an RFQ. We had very good response to it. I think I've told you at eleven, architectural firms respond. We picked, they were all ranked by Dennis Heimbrod, Mike Garrigan, and myself. We selected five to interview and brought in, one of which was Williams. Listened to those interviews, met again to talk a little bit, and each of us had independently come to ranking number one in this process, Williams Architects. Tonight, Mark Brody is here tonight with us. He's a short presentation to introduce his firm and the design team to you for this pretty exciting project. So I'd like to bring my mark up here.
I'll get the computer going. Thanks, Michael. Thank you, everybody. First of all, again, my name is Mark Brody, the senior project manager at Williams Architects. Want to thank everybody for selecting us. We're very excited about the opportunity. You've got a couple of really nice projects here, and we're going to do a great job. We've done a small presentation tonight. There you go. Basically, a little bit about our firm. Williams Architects has been practicing since nineteen seventy-four, so going on fifty years. Our firm is basically split between what we consider municipal work and recreational work. So pretty much all of our work is in the public sector. We're very familiar with, you know, various types of public input meetings and all of that that goes with that. So that's, you know, previous ninety-five percent of our work is that. And we're evenly split between recreational as well as municipal. I personally have been doing municipal projects for over thirty years. Williams has a great focus on public works, police, village hall, fire, anything to go with it. We have to turn around and see. We have our next slide, please. This is just kind of an example of a list of some of our projects, and these are really village hall and public works projects. So when we interview, we just want to make sure that every head top is that we, we do have experience in these projects. These are just so many examples. These are certain public works projects we've done that you see are complete. The one in the middle on the top there, that is a project in Florida. So we will not make your building blue, but that is something they definitely do like down there in Florida. And then the next set will be more in the village hall, police municipal type of projects. So one thing we want you to understand is that we have no signature design style. I mean, we design for you folks. So part of our process would be learning, you know, your aesthetic styles. We're not going to come with any preconceived notions of what the facilities should look like or anything. That's all part of the process. And I think, speaking of which, we're going to go into the process portion now. So what I want to do here is, this is a two-phase project. The first phase is what we call the space needs. And then the second phase, which we'll get to in a minute, is more the traditional implementation phase. So I don't know how much of this you can see. We have a project data and kickoff portion of the project. We have staffing, vehicle, and equipment where we're going to be meeting with everybody. With some additional phases here, including public review. So let me just sort of explain to you what we're going to do here. We're going to have a kickoff meeting. That's going to be with staff and any appropriate stakeholders. We have done them from small groups to large groups. It's really dependent on how the village would like us to proceed. And one of the early things we're going to do is obviously get familiar with your existing buildings, especially the one that's going to be the village hall. We are going to bring in our consultant team to meet with you, and then we're going to come back for what we call staff input meetings. And that will have a sit here or wherever you would like us to meet with the appropriate staff for both the village hall side and the public work side to really get your input as to what type of spaces, rooms, and things go into the facility. People will certainly know, but they won't think of everything. And the fact that we've done this, we will certainly sort of guide them along, but we want to hear your input. And what that leads us to is a space needs analysis. And so we will have a document for each building of the various rooms and spaces by heading. So we may have, you know, there's a water department or the administration area or vehicle storage area. We're going to work through all that and develop a program. And the program is basically the written, you know, it's basically an Excel spreadsheet that lists all the rooms and sizes. We have Frederick Queen Corporation on our team doing our cost estimating. They're building a number of projects with us right now. They have really good current understanding of the market conditions, which have been very unusual lately, as you all, as you all know. And so they're going to go some very accurate cost estimates. And so what's really important is that we don't start drawing right out of the gate. It's important to determine what you need and reconcile that with the budget before we move forward with the conceptual design phase. So we'll work through that, and at the end of that process, we will have met with everybody. We'll have a program for both the village hall as well as the public works department, and we'll have costs associated with it. And from that point, we'll move into conceptual design options. I don't know if you want to flip ahead. Yeah, these are just some typical shots of, you know, the process, us meeting with folks at various locations on site. These are kind of the concept design plans. So the early on plans will be sort of colored rectangles, if you will. They'll, you know, they're not going to show every door and window and wall. They're going to basically show administrations fifteen hundred square foot you want to adjacent to vehicle maintenance and so on and so on. So these are kind of we call blocking diagrams. You'll see there, the next one. And then this, we actually prepared for our interview with you a little while ago, basically just kind of theorizing what a community of this size might need in terms of size and, and the spaces, just to sort of show you. This is a very conceptual model. It is a three D model that allows you to spin around, look at the massing, as we call it, the heights, the elevations, if we're talking flat roofs, pitch roofs, et cetera. But this is all before we get into real final design. This is all part of the concept design project process, excuse me. And then we did the same kind of a look, as you will, on the village hall component. So you can see that we're showing the original building on the right, the new meeting room or boardroom off to the, off to the left side there. So again, these are just very early on concepts of how we would do something. So we don't want you to think that tonight we've already got a design. We're just trying to show you, these are the kind of graphics and the process. And I know people are always eager to get right into it, but you will find it's, it's much better to really reconcile the needs and the costs before you start drawing. This last thing we want to do is if you hadn't anticipated the budget of this much, and we come in way over and we bring you a design, we want to make sure we're, we're working together with you. So with Jim and his team, and then obviously keeping the board here apprised of our steps along the way. So there is a multi-step process. At the end of this process, we will have a public review and presentations. Again, that's really up to however you'd like us to do. We've hosted open houses, we've made board presentations, any, any really, and however you want us to handle it, we will do that to make sure everybody that's a stakeholder in the project will be on board. After that, you get to the implement, implementation phase, and those are the traditional phases of schematic design, design development, construction documents, bidding, and then construction administration. I don't want to go on too long. Schematic is where it starts looking like a building. You'll start seeing rooms, doors, room labels, square footages, three D massing. And again, at the end of every phase, we present and make sure the board gives us approval to move into the next phase. We don't just start. We don't, at the end of DD or schematic design, design development, we always come back. Once you give us approval, the design development phase, it gets much more detailed. It will look like rooms. You will see building sections, you know, cut through it, exterior elevations. We'll be talking about the materials, the aesthetics, all of that. And at the end of design development, we have a very solid budget, and we have a very good idea what the building's going to look like. And finally, when you move to construction documents, it really becomes more of the technical aspect of the drawings and the written specifications. You basically have a set of drawings to look at. We also have a one or two big specifications books that have all the different materials that you would have in the spec. So those together, they're called the construction documents. So we'll work through that process, and then however the project delivery method is, the job will go out to bid. There's, there's different ways to do that. And then during construction, we are on site for regular job meetings, you know, typically every other week or thereabouts. It's all to be determined as we get into it. I know we've talked about, these two jobs could be on separate projects or on separate schedules. You know, the village hall, since you've bought a building, I think that one could go quicker. So it's really up to you if you want to see it all go out as one, or if you'd rather sort of fast track one. Again, these are all things that we'll get into more detail with you. So I think that's basically kind of the process. The last thing I wanted to show you is, on the visualize, visualization aspect, if you take a look, these are the more detailed projects you're going to see. You're really going to start getting a handle. So again, there's the Florida job on the top there. On the lower left is Lake County Forest Resort District Building we're working on right now. That's going to be a net zero building. And then that is Wooddale Public Works. So you can sort of see, you get a little bit better context with three D perspective views to get a handle. You just want to click through the next batch. Just some other projects. That's Montgomery Public Works in the top there. It's a fire station that we're currently working on right now in Michigan, and it was one more. And then just some other larger projects. So, you know, we can do complete interior, exterior fly-throughs. It depends, you know, how much, how much we want to do. But the point is, we're going to walk you through a process along the way and make sure that the board and the staff are with us. We're not just going to go off and come back at the end and say, okay, we're ready to go out to bid. So I might have rushed that a little bit, but I didn't want to keep you here. So that's basically, I think that's kind of our process in a nutshell. Are there any questions for me?
All right, starting on the side.
Look, I don't have any questions for him. I do have a question on the resolution board at that point.
Sure, okay. Just a music. All right. Thank you for your presentation.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Discussion, trustees.
If we go to page twenty-seven of the resolution.
What page is that?
Page twenty-seven.
So page one of the resolution, page twenty-seven of the package, is that right?
Yeah, okay. If you notice in there, it says that the building for the village hall is at nine thirty-five Skidmore. But it says the public works is no longer accommodates, but it doesn't say where we're looking at the public works. So are we doing one project at one site, or we just, are we doing two different sites? I think the resolution needs to define that as two separate projects.
It's, it is two separate sites. So, yeah, you know, we're thinking Grim Road property that we've purchased could be a public works facility and nine thirty-five Skidmore for the village hall facility. So I'm sorry, didn't catch that resolution.
Yes, the bit more.
I'm sorry, trustee Mason. I didn't.
The bit more problems coming back to the village.
Uh, that, that.
Bitner.
The bitner. I believe that that had ten years ago.
Yeah, it was eight.
Yeah.
So you're in bit more. As you think I had your.
So I think the, yeah, I think the resolution should just be amended to just reference, you know, village-owned property at Grim Road.
Yeah, we could add a whereas, there's that where we're looking at.
You could add a recital. That's fine. I think, yeah, if that's what the, if that's what the board wants, we could add a recital to ensure that it is a property specifics thereof are not presently known, but village-owned property. That's fine. I just think we need to designate that we're doing two separate products, and it's kind of confusing in the way the resolution's written.
All right. Thank you, trustee Mason. Trustee Mason. You're. Oh, okay. Sorry. I thought you were deep involved. I thought you were really, I was like, what's, what's coming here? I thought you were really. Trustee Bourbon.
No.
Trustee Domeniac.
My assumption is that we're going to try for lead certification as we design this building.
I, we've not come to any conclusions on that. I, I think it's a discussion that we need to have. I would like to set aside some time during next Friday's quarterly meeting to get some early information on where the board is, on green, you know, I mentioned a net zero building. You know, it really becomes a conversation about cost and the right thing to do and what the public expects. I think there should be some consideration given to how green we're going to be with this project or either of these two projects. But, yeah, to, to be determined, I guess, how, how we're going to.
So. So when we have the quarterly meeting, when you're agreeing forth to be criteria for a big certification.
Yeah, I'll see if I can.
And then this is nothing to do with this resolution, but can we do public works before we do Grim Road?
We could. The, the onset of Grim Road, the initial part Grim Road may be a driveway to public works.
Okay.
You know, at the same grade and, you know, to, to, to make it so that road construction later would be set up for it. But I am thinking it's possible that, that would be the case. So utilities need to be there and need to think about the ingress and egress of this facility.
Thank you. I have, your honor.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? Call vote.
Here's.
Do we have motions?
Yeah.
All right. Do we amend the motion to cover the changes? I like the changes. I mean, yeah, I think it's, yes. We say, I think that no one objected to the changes. So there's two ways for my motion. As you know, trustee Pierce, if no objection to the changes, or there's a motion to amend. I think that the mayor called out there were no objections to that motion. It was on there. So under Robert's rules, I remember would stand rather than going through the procedural amendment of the motion.
Okay.
Yes, then.
Mason.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Herman. Yes.
In here.
Yes.
Right, six voting yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance adding one more class A and A1 restaurant liquor license for NSCG Oliveri North LLC to be located at three eighty-four Lake Street to reflect a change in corporate ownership. Ordinance number twenty-two dash one-one dash five-seven. I entertain a motion in a second.
Motion to approve and waive the second.
Motion trustee Domeniac, waive in the second reading. Motion trust, or second trustee Luther. I believe some of the applicants may be here. So the information, the package, any questions? The way the trustees. Oh, for, for transparency on this issue, my office does represent the sellers in this transaction, so I would be accusing myself of any discussion regarding this then. Okay.
Yeah, and. Go, you. Yeah. But under the code, relative to the word interest, it is not an interest in real property is defined in the ethics ordinance of the village of Antioch.
All right, discussion. And I'll, I'll actually let the legislature.
I'm going to leave the discussion on this. Discussion, trustee Pierce. Um, I just, I'm curious. We all know that the ownership has changed, but are there future plans to change Oliveri North, or is it planning to stay the same?
Stay the same.
Okay.
Sir.
I didn't bring a PowerPoint presentation.
Well, you don't have your PowerPoint. Maybe just introduce yourself and tell us what's going on.
Absolutely. My name is Andy Houser. I'm a resident up in San Wisconsin. I have two business partners, Jonathan and Victor Rovoni, who are on the application as well. Victor lives here in Antioch. Jonathan lives down in Lake Forest. We are a private equity firm. We purchase existing businesses. We currently own Hickory Hill Golf Course down in Lake Villa, or Nine Hole. We own Red School Cafe up in Bristol, Wisconsin, and operate that. And we also own and operate Whistle Stop Cafe over in Fox Lake, Illinois. And we just secured a liquor license over there through the village of Fox Lake and through the state of Illinois. As far as Oliveries, we're looking, we like to purchase businesses that have existing track records. Owners are not heavily involved in the operation of the business. And we've been dining at Oliveries for years, and we intend to keep the staff the same. For those that are concerned, Salvatore will be with us and will not be leaving. And so he's actually going to be part of our, our big team. And, yeah, we're really excited. So, but nothing's going to change. We'll see the, the same old, same old. We will renovate the bathrooms and go through the permanent process. But other than that, I, I think it's just going to continue to be Oliveries. Any other specific questions?
Not for me. Trustee Mason. I don't know what I can bring up, and I can't bring up because one of the senior partners isn't here with the background.
Sure, we can discuss it.
I don't know. He's not here, and I don't want to be specific about, you know, some securities licensing, all that stuff. So I don't know if you want to share that information.
Sure, it's a, it's a public record. I, I don't know every nuance of the detail, but he's referring to Victor Rovoni. He lost his securities license through FINRA. We're having back taxes that were not disclosed. Those back taxes to the state of Illinois have all been paid for as we've secured the liquor license at Whistle Stop, same applicants. He's in the process of getting re-certified and should have a certification in that. There were no criminal charges. Everything was done on the up and up, but I don't know what other details you want.
Well, there's also, there is some, six other charges under.
For him.
For the rent, yeah.
For the, I believe every one of those been taken care of. There's no, there's no outstanding means or debts.
No, I, FINRA, FINRA's tough.
Yeah.
When you do your forms, your four forms, now, you get it. So.
Yep, he's gone through and refilled that out in the process of re-securing with you for.
And the two restaurants, prior restaurant, you own.
Yeah.
Great places.
Great places.
Three Club course, like that place could, that's what we call it.
And we own Bob's Breeding.
Yeah. That's three, we call it the three club challenge. Then can't be the same club every time. That's right. That's all, that's, that's all I have. Trustee Peterson.
I have no questions.
Trustee Pluto.
No question.
Trustee Bourbon.
No questions.
Trustee Domeniac.
No questions.
You are.
Yes.
Um, one question. So just ratification based upon the, the good questions by trustee Mason. It's the exact same ownership group and the exact same percentages that was licensed by the other municipality, correct?
Yes, sir.
And none of you have lost a liquor license due to any of the events or any of the circumstances as set forth as discussed by trustee Mason, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. I have nothing further. I'm totally, I'm bad clerk. Would you mind, I think he likes this.
Roll call.
Here's.
Aye.
Mason.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
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 In here.
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of a motion to waive the formal bidding requirement for expenses related to the emergency repair of the clarifier at the wastewater treatment facility. I have a motion in a second. Motion trustee Pierce.
Second.
Second trustee Domeniac. All right, Jim, this is his floor. And remember, you find this a lot more interesting than all of us.
Thank you, your honor. To circle back on our wastewater clarifier, to where the floor buckled. There's been a lot of work behind the scenes to analyze, you know, what happened and what, what can be done to fix it. I, I just put together a couple of slides. You have a visual of what, what we're really talking about here. That's the clarifier behind me. The apparatus in the middle is what separates solids from the clear water, clarifies it before it goes to disinfection. So essentially, what happened for anybody that may be listening and watching, is the floor buckled in the middle. It was the low point of the floor. It's kind of concave. And when the forces of the groundwater acted on this tank, heat that floor two, two, approximately two feet. Subsequent to that, there was some, some of that also started. Maybe the floor go right back to where it was. That's not the case. When we did fill the clarifier, it did not go back all the way to where the floor should have been, mainly because of the amount of steel in the concrete, steel yielded. And essentially, you can think of like a pipe cleaner. Once you, once you bend it, you're never going to get it back to where it used to be. That's what you can think of yielding. So what we've done here is. We've, you have a technical memo in your packet, and I'm just going to summarize kind of what the findings are for that. Based on the soil borings and the corrings of the floor, discovery that there's a void that exists under this floor, our pyesometers are monitoring wells, sort of understanding what's happening with groundwater, and just the analysis of the tank design itself has produced a, our strand engineering has produced a memo for you, outlining the repair. First and foremost, that apparatus that you saw in the first picture has to come out. A new floor has to be poured, and we need to control groundwater with some more monitoring wells. We have one that we've discovered, discovered and activated, but the, the team has decided we should probably have two more extraction wells. My, my ask is that we consider this an emergent situation. It is. And basically break this into three parts. The apparatus which has to come out, it's a sole source. It's on your agenda tonight to authorize that expenditure of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That would include the removal of that apparatus by the, the manufacturer of that apparatus. So it's, they're the only people who really can modify it or refurbish it. It was due, it's about eleven years into service, and it was due to be sandblasted and painted and refurbished anyway. So this is the time when, you know, once it's out of it, we would refurbish it. That part. this is the time when, you know, once it's out of it, we would refurbish it, that part might not be covered by insurance, we do have a claim going. Do, do not know yet exactly how much this may be covered. Um, but that's, you know, kind of step one is to get that out of there and get that out of the way. Um, step two may be to install some groundwater, a groundwater monitor, um, extraction wells to control water during construction. Um, and step three is gonna be the removal of the floor and replacement of the, the, the slip, the basically base slab of the floor. Um, we'd like to accomplish that as soon as possible timeframe with the plant in, in normal operations mode. Um, but it, it, you know, we do not intend to ad- advertise for bids, we are gonna go to contractors that we know can do this work at an expedient timeframe, solicit proposals, have multiple proposals. Um, and then make a, a recommendation to the village board to award to a competent firm that can accomplish this work. Um, the, the wells are, we've got many companies out there that do groundwater, uh, dewatering. So there's only a couple of firms out there, I'm gonna also get proposals from the ones that I know about. Uh, I will come to you for a, an award. Um, at that time, when I have something that I think I'm, I'm comfortable recommending to you, uh, for the groundwater extraction. Um, hopefully, you know, in not too distant future, I'll be coming to you with a contractor to repair the slab. So that's, that's essentially what we're talking about, the estimate right now, if you may have looked at in the packet is, we're, we're, we're at, gonna be somewhere about eight hundred thousand dollars with all of these things. Um, and there is a contingency there for things we don't know about, so. Um, that, that's the, the item on your agenda tonight. Um, is, you know, I want you to know that we're doing everything we can to get this back online, we think we have good track, we have a good analysis what needs to happen and what the condition of the tank is, and now we need to move forward and fix it. With step one being that, uh, award to Sable for, uh, removal and refurbishment of apparatus.
Thank you. Two questions, the first one might not be completely relevant to what we're talking about here, but, uh, when they do, um, go and do this work, complete this work, is there a plan to, um, inspect the other one, just to make sure that if we remove the water that we can, is there a fix other than replacing the whole thing if we see some potential problem in the future?
It's a great question. Um, part of the solution here is the installation of additional PRBs which are pressure relief valves, when the tank is taken down, these valves open up and allow groundwater to enter the tank, taking the pressure off of the tank. Um, we suspect that was a problem leading to the failure here. Possibly if those PRBs were left, uh, stuck open, that water from the tank may have been the source of water, it's the the, um, probably the leading, um, culprit here. Uh, most likely scenario, I should say, as to how groundwater got as high as it did outside this tank, so, um, I would propose that we do that just that. Um, part of the reason the dewatering, um, points were selected was to surround both tanks. And we are having monitoring rough wells around both tanks that can understand groundwater before we take these tanks down. Um, but it could be that, um, we install, I think there's, I forgot how many, Dennis, twenty-five or twenty-six or twenty-nine or?
Oh, it's good.
Yeah, they, I think we have ten PRBs on the existing tank, and I think the engineers have determined that was way too few, there should have been thirty. Um, the new tank will get all installed, I think we should also put them on the other tank, so we are uh, in a more comfortable situation, we're more assured that we're not gonna have the same problems on that tank. It's a great question, if you could.
And the other question I had was, um, is it an industry standard, when they do the repair, is there gonna be some type of uh, warranty in the work, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years, I think that, you know?
Yeah. Typically, typically you've got a twelve, a twelve month.
Okay.
You get about a year worth of warranty, uh, quality of the concrete, um. But I, I don't know that there, any such warranty would exist or something.
Those, those are my questions. So, the, the, trustee Pierce?
Um. Man, I know we need to get it done, my, I, you mentioned the void and pumping out groundwater, stuff like that. Is there possibly we're gonna develop Saint Paul over there? I don't know, I'm not an engineer here, but I think if you got a void, we gotta be doing repairs of, of the void or something.
And that led to the, um, the, the recommendation to remove the slab, um, and replace it, so and the, the tank pumped up, the, the tank was filled again, came down, but not all the way, resulting in a void. So that floor will be torn out, we will prepare the base, um, the subgrade again to eliminate that void and pour fresh concrete on top of it.
So it's a void between the base of the tank and the ground, not a void forming underneath it.
Yeah, but, but the, that was part of the recommendation. We cored the slab and looked and discovered this void, but it could be irregular, might not be the same everywhere, so that led to the recommendation to remove the slabs, so we can fully understand the subbase and see it, you know, physically and prepare it properly to pour into the floor.
All I had, your honor.
Alright, thank you, trustee Mason?
This is kind of a, we can just done right away, we got two issues, we got coldness coming. And concrete, I don't care if anybody says makeup chemicals in concrete doesn't bore the same. And I don't think it cures the same. Um, two, making it heavy snow, that's gonna cause a big issue with this plant.
Yeah.
With melting.
You're absolutely correct, working under winter conditions is, is not ideal.
Right, so this is something I'm gonna move, kind of quickly.
We're, we're being told we're talking about a two to three month process right now, once we get to a contractor, so. It does put some winter conditions, it may have cost to cover or heat this, um. Um, but we've had discussions with the engineers about um, different concrete mixes, you know, different methods that could be used. You know, ultimately, everybody's on the same page, it has to be repaired right, um.
And could this, because of the unknown cost of heating, this be a burden deal?
I, I don't know yet. But there would.
Because of your energy costs, just if you had to heat it, and the contract is delayed.
I would like to, um, have some kind of, uh, degrading damage and provision in the contract, typically do, to put you know, the timeframe in place by which the contractor would have to perform. Um, with something like this, we're, we're gonna we're, we're gonna have to play, you know, we're gonna have to attract a contractor, contractors don't like to do things like this. Um, so we're gonna, you know, have to play nice with the contractor and, and talk through these things before the award, I think there's gonna have to be interplay between contractor and villagers and engineers, and hash these things out before we award a contract.
Thank you, trustee Peterson?
I think you've explained it very well, I don't have any questions right now.
Alright, trustee Luther?
One question. Timeframe wise, if you went to bid versus not going to bid, what is that the way, the project?
Probably weeks to a month. But it, but it would probably add some cost as well, preparing formal bidding documents as well, it would, it would add some cost.
Thank you. Trustee Berman?
I, I don't.
Uh, trustee Domenack?
No comment, question.
Alright, uh, thank you, uh, roll call please on this side.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Minia?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries, uh, second item related to this is consideration, an approval of a resolution authorizing the village administrator to execute an agreement with Sable Mechanical to perform rehab work related to the wastewater treatment plant clarifier in the amount of one hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. Resolution number twenty-two dash eighty-two. Motion trustee Pierce?
Second.
Second trustee Domenack? Assuming no discussion, roll call please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Minia?
Yes.
Alright, six voting yes, motion carries, last item on the regular business agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance authorizing the village administrator to sell, sell, or otherwise dispose of equipments. Ordinance number twenty-two dash eleven dash fifty-eight, um, we have a motion in the second, waiving the second reading.
Same old.
Motion trustee Peterson?
Second.
Second trustee Berman? Uh, any discussion regarding these items? Alright, if not, roll call please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries, uh, anything on the administration report? Um. Anything on the village clerk's report? Any trustee reports other than those submitted? Trustee Berman?
My business.
Yeah?
Um, I would like to bring up, um, I'm not quite sure how many, um, people are aware of this specifics in regards to the Safety Act, but I do feel that um, for the safety of our police officers and our residents in our town, um, I think we do need to have a discussion as a board, um, in regards to this, um, and to make sure that the residents, there are residents that are aware, um, of what is gonna happen on January first, um, there are a lot of changes, um, lot of sweeping provisions, uh, that do create significant public safety concerns, um. Might want to ask, do?
So, um, I did receive from, uh, the village attorney's office, a memo or, uh, a resolution that we could review, and I could bring that to the quarterly meeting if it's something we wanna discuss as a board to, um, you know, vote on and support of, they did send that over to us.
You're talking a resolution, saying like it.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, correct, um. Yeah, so we can bring that, I didn't wanna sign off on it without discussing with the board, but, uh, we can talk about that next week too. Alright, um, any other trustee reports, trustee Pierce?
Um, I gave you all, I reported the copy of the Public Works. You all have that. Uh, one thing that may or may not fall into the Public Works is, um, and I'm not sure, is the group, um, hopefully, contract, um, do we know when that expires?
I think, do we go seven years? So I think we're at year one or two, maybe year two of seven.
Okay. Um, I don't think they're performing to their contract, is my personal opinion, I think they have failed us. And I think they're, so they've got one truck that, that they can operate in Antioch to pick up leaves, we got residents out there every day raking their leaves back up. It's unacceptable performance, I think the village board, I would ask the village board and mayor to convey that message to Root that they have failed their contract. They can't uphold the contract, maybe we need to clear, declare them default and look for another waste management, where a, in a waste hauling company. I, 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 what they're doing right now is, is to me, almost criminal. It, it's not just fighting the wind, they, they rake it up, they wait for the people to come, they never come, then they have to re-rake it because of the wind. And then they wait for the people to come, they never come, and they gotta re-rake it. It, it, it's, it's not right for the residents to be going through this because Root can't handle their contract.
I believe, um, that's our two.
Yeah, the, the leaf backing program, uh, is weather dependent, so with the wind and, and they do have to, um, there's a large volume of these that have to pay up, when residents are concerned about putting floor in the way, for having to re-rake them. They also have the option to back them and put them out as landscape leaves.
I, I understand it, but we.
Landscape, this program, which is also.
Thank you, um, I will say to the board then, we shouldn't be selling it as a rake up to the curb program, we should be selling it as a, got a bag of program. Um, at the same time, they can come in here to the village in one day and empty all their garbage. They can't seem to make it here and empty our leaves like they're supposed to, I, I, I really think they're default of their, their contract.
Sure, and that's just. I'll look at the contract too, for the village attorney. Alright, thank you, um, any other trustee reports, otherwise, uh, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion trustee Domenack?
Second.
Second trustee Pierce? Roll call please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Minia?
Yes.
Motion carries, meetings adjourned seven sixteen, we will, um, take a five minute recess at the end, it can be. Alright, call meeting order is seven twenty-four, uh, roll call please.
trustee Pierce?
Present.
Mason?
Here.
trustee Peterson?
Present.
trustee Luther?
Here.
trustee Berman?
Here.
Present, um, first item is the approval of the October twelfth, twenty twenty committee, the whole meeting minutes as presented. Motion in the second, so, motion trustee Luther?
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, uh, any discussion, otherwise roll call please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries, um. On the mayor report, there's only one thing I wanna write, bring up that came up in staff last week, um, that I think the board should know about, we should start talking about. Is, um, uh, Dennis made us aware of the, um, shortage in, uh, the ability to get trucks or items that maybe needed for the public works, so uh, we may have to start thinking about placing orders for trucks that aren't going to be available for till twenty twenty-five, is what he's being told. So, uh, we may have to think a little bit differently about how we spend money or budget for those items, but, uh, that's the world we live in. I just wanted the board to know that before it's a surprise. Alright, um, next is regular business, first item is discussion regarding golf carts.
Thank you, your honor, based on the initial discussion, I think we talked about this sometime a month or so ago. Um, you had a draft ordinance in your, in your last, or one, one of the previous call meetings. Um, staff just suddenly made some comments on that, what, what is in your packet tonight is a revised, um, draft ordinance, well, with some changes, primarily taking out the non-highway vehicle language and putting in golf carts, 'cause if we were only talking about golf carts, let's just simplify and talk about golf carts directly. Um, there were some other changes made to, to the ordinance, to simplify, clarify. Um, one, one of the other changes was having the process by which these things are ticketed or possibly licenses are revoked, simplified utilizing our adjudication court. Um, but it, but essentially this, you know, we're get, we're getting, I think, closer to an ordinance that could be considered by the board, uh, to allow golf carts to be, um, on designated streets. Um, there is, I'm not sure if it's in the packet, probably should be, um, if there, if there's a map, we have developed a map where golf carts can be, it just is in the packet, map, no. Um, you know, and it's, it's almost all village streets, except those streets in the village which are not our jurisdiction, like, not that. Or, honestly, there's portions of Savage that are not village, so we can't authorize on streets that are not in our jurisdiction. Um. There, I, I think we took sections of Tiffany, sections of possibly Trever, if we saw a different way for you to traverse from your neighborhood to the downtown environment and not get on a Tiffany Road or Trever Road or Nelson Road. Nelson Road leads to a county highway, it doesn't lead to a legal place to be. So, the, a map has been developed, uh, which staff feels is reasonable, but this, this is really a policy discussion from the village board. Um, but we have, you know, what I think staff would view as a workable, um, ordinance to um, allow golf carts to, to drive on village streets legally, um. I think it will, will be some learning curve to this, so we'll try to anticipate as much as we can. Um, but, um, it's really, it's a, a policy discussion for the village board.
Alright, thank you, trustee Pierce?
Um, I'm still in favor of this, I think we're in a lot of projects, uh, progress. Um. I don't have any issues with it other than the fact, um, I have seen a lot of people on golf carts that wouldn't conform to this, and we need to have some way to enforce this. Um, the people who are on the golf carts that don't conform to this, they're very excited that they're gonna be able to drive their golf carts legally in the village, I mean, the word's out. But their condition of some of the golf carts they're seeing leave a lot to be desired.
Thank you, trustee Mason?
Technically left out, you had registration, car registrations, ticket, or sticker. But you left out the biggest thing they gotta produce, because of state law, you get a, uh, insurance card with. I just, I must have skipped over. a, uh, insurance card with, I didn't, I must have skipped over it. The one thing I was thinking about, the golf cart is the third passenger seat that sits backwards. Not a fan of that because someone's not paying attention, they don't, they don't, they don't have that seatbelt on, 'cause I wanna see seatbelts. That, that person that's falling out of the golf cart. There's a, you know, if you wanna have this all park conforming, it always sits backwards in a cart. That was the old station wagon back in the seventies. They got rid of those, and if someone does get an accident, they're more prone to whiplash going backwards and forward.
Trustee Peterson.
I'm, I'm in favor of this as well, and trustee Pierce alluded to, uh, one of my concerns is there are higher golf carts on streets now, and they're completely non-conforming, so it would be safer to have something like this in place where we can tell someone, you can't drive that, it, it has to be you have to do the due diligence and put seatbelts in, and we need turn signals, and we need lights, and we need brakes, and we need all the things that, uh, is in this ordinance and in the state's, so, I think, you know, the state of Illinois wrote a statute, and I think we should, um, adopt that.
Alright, thank you, trustee Bluth there.
I'm, I'm prepared to move forward on this. And my only concern is, where you just mentioned about people have existing carts that aren't of the standards, we're gonna need to make sure that we're enforcing this from get-go. You know, and making sure that these, these carts, 'cause we're gonna have some issues with that, so, that's all.
Thank you, trustee Berman.
Um, I am in favor of this, um, we don't have any, anything else to add.
Alright, so, um, if there is, uh, no objection, we can move this to our, uh, next meeting in November, and which is, um, not the typical second or fourth, uh, Wednesday, because that's the evening for Thanksgiving, so it's the following week, so we'll move this over to the November thirtieth, the general.
One, one last comment, when you put this together, when you push this together, is maybe have like an example picture for people to get. So they can see, this is, this is what the golf cart maybe should look like, this is what you don't want. You prove the old beat up electric cart that you try not to get at the golf course, 'cause that.
Revalley cart.
They're getting new golf carts. On the old ones, you're coming in. Yeah, they're getting new golf carts, spending a lot of money doing all that hurts.
Alright, alright, we can put some price of, uh, examples in with the packet, and we should probably put something together that's a packet when people come in.
Yeah.
Information.
There'll be various.
Yeah, okay, um, alright, next is discussion regarding twenty twenty-three, uh, meeting days. Any discussion about this before we, we move this to, um, a board meeting for approval? I still like Mondays.
Next Mondays.
Alright, any discussion or concerns, obviously we can bring this, if there are, if you find something that is concerning, we bring it up by the next, uh, meeting, but we should probably move this to the November thirtieth, if there's no objection, any objection to moving this to the thirtieth for approval? Alright, any other business to discuss? Uh, I didn't have any requests for executive session, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Alright, motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Pierce, uh, meeting adjourned seven thirty-four P M.